Yes.
Okay, thank you all for joining us for the October 5th meeting of the Barrington, New Hampshire Select Board. As Chair of the Barrington Select Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of COVID-19 pandemic, in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I am confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone, with additional access possibilities by video and other electronic means. We are utilizing Microsoft Teams for this meeting. All members of the Select Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public has the access to contemporaneously listen and, if necessary, participate in this meeting. Phone participation can take place by dialing 1-603-664-0240 and entering conference ID 676-749-973. # or pound sign. Video participation can take place by clicking on bit.ly\barrsb. I think that's also, Connor, isn't that also supposed to say 2020 something?
Actually, I've made some improvements in how we conduct business here, and now it's the same link every single time. Much shorter. You're welcome. Good catch.
Providing public notice of the necessary information. We previously gave notice of this public meeting, and how to access the meeting via phone or video. All instructions have been provided by the town on their website, Town of Barrington, www-newhampshire.gov. This mechanism for providing the public to alert this public body during the meeting if problems occur will take place by placing a phone call at 603-664-0146, or emailing administrator@barrington.nh.gov. We would adjourn this meeting if the public was unable to access the meeting. In the event that the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. All votes taken during this meeting shall be done via a roll call vote. Let's begin with a roll call. Attendance, please, in alphabetical order. Please state your name, where you reside, or where you are at the current time of the meeting, and if there is anyone with you.
Daniel, I'm at 334 Old Conken Road. I am locked inside my office. There's no one to influence my vote, and I'm armed to protect myself. Thank you.
Yep, Select Person Bailey.
George Bailey. I live at 19 Chesley Drive. I am currently in my office, and the only, there is nobody here to influence my vote. The only other person in the House is my wife who is downstairs.
Vice Chair Nap.
Andrew Nap, 96 Lindsey Point. I am in my house. My wife, my son, and our dog are in the house, but not, and I am locked into the office, so.
Select Person Sakosha.
21 James Henry Drive, Jim Sakosha. Nobody's here to influence my vote. I'm with my dogs, and that's about it.
Okay, and Tracy Hardikoff, 48 Stone Farm Road, Barrington, New Hampshire. My husband is home in the other room, along with our Bernese Mountain Dog. No one will be influencing my vote. Could you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
Okay, busy agenda. We have no public hearings. That's exciting. We will be hearing tonight on an appointment where we hear from the town clerk and have a budget presentation. The Advisory Budget Committee will also be presenting material. So, do we have him?
We're going to start with the tax collector.
Oh, let's prefer first order then. Do we have Linda?
I apologize. The order is different on the agenda in my report. That's, that one's on me. But we'll, we'll start with Linda, if that's okay, the tax collector in my report. I just want to point out a couple of things to the folks following along at home. So again, the entire budget binder is available electronically at barrington.nh.gov/2021budget. Tonight, we'll be looking at Section 12, which is the tax collector's budget, and Section 13, which is the town clerk election budget. So for anybody interested, those, the details that the Select Board and Budget Committee have are available to the public at those addresses. I'll also just point out, highlighted in my report, you'll see two changes for the tax collector. Registry of deeds, a reduction, and postage, an increase, and then the Advisory Budget Committee minutes are there as well. So Linda, I believe, is participating on the phone. Linda, are you there?
Yeah. Yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, welcome.
Okay, hi. I was told that I was supposed to start with fun facts instead of, in lieu of goodies. So I do have some, I went, had a chance today to look through some of the old tax records, and it's pretty interesting. Everything's in cursive, and sometimes a little hard to read, but it said in 1849, the tax records show that you were taxed on land, improved and unimproved, horses, asses, and mules, cows, oxen, and other meat stock, and sheep, carriages, and mills, and carting machines for wool process. Carriages were valued anywhere from $45 to $75, and not many people owned one. Alicia Locke owned 188 acres valued at $2,500, had six horses valued at $180, 50 meat stock valued at $669, and 24 sheep valued at $36, and a carriage valued at $60. And she paid $2,997 in the money tax, and $1,0498 in highway tax, which to me seems high for way back then. And then 10 years later, they still taxed on all the above, but they added female and male dogs. And Jacob Hayes owned 300 acres valued at $4,000, one horse valued at $20, 13 meat stock valued at $280, and 11 sheep valued at $22. And he paid, the money tax was $52.40, and the highway tax was $2.52. So it was, it was pretty crazy. It also listed shareholders in the Boston and Main Railroad, and how many shares they owned. And it looks like Jeremiah Kingman owned the most shares, 106. And then it went down to 13, 4, 6, 3, and to one share. So it was kind of interesting to look through the old records. I do encourage anybody who's interested in looking at the old tax ledgers. They're in my office, and they're to view if you'd like to see them.
Very good.
That was my fun fact.
I love it. Thanks, Linda.
Very nice, very nice.
So, to begin, on my budget, I'm looking at the contracts, and we use a mortgagey search vendor called Total Notice. And I'm keeping that contract line at the same 28. The office equipment and equipment rental stay at $1 each, just to keep the line item open. And the copier lease and maintenance was $1, but I put it at 100 because there is, I think it's an $87 fee for the copier machine company to come in and do maintenance on the machine. The printing is staying the same. The printer mailing some limited has been great. Again, we have a cost savings on the postage. They only charges 26 cents per piece for the postage, and 36 cents a piece for the actual bill envelope and return envelope. And this year, about 2,490, excuse me, 9,592 tax bills went out. Let's see. For conferences and training this past year, everything was canceled due to COVID. So my line item, I believe, is about $300 year-to-date spent, and that was for online government account, accounting certificate program that my deputy is taking. Next year, however, that line item will be $2,000, and hopefully, we will be going to the spring conference and the annual tax collector conference. And Peyton will continue her certification training, her third and last year, and I'll be going back for recertification, which I have to do every five years. It should have been last, this past year, but it got canceled. Dues and fees, I only, I think I only spent 40, because we didn't have the spring workshop or the conference. The registry of deeds, I had put in 1,700, and I thought, gee, that's awful high, so I had Amy pull all my expenditures with the Stratford County Registry, and realized that I had over, I had miscalculated. So instead of $1,255 per recording, the lien redemptions are only $2 per piece. So, so that brought it back down to the $1,050. That stays the same. Mileage and expenses also was affected because we did not travel anywhere. The only item on my mileage was, I want to say 187, and I'm guessing, because I don't have it in front of me, and that was just for my going back and forth to the post office on a daily basis. Office supplies are going to stay the same. Postage is going to go up. I had between 2020, or 2019, 197 pieces went out at the certified return receipt cost of $690 each. And this year, 344 pieces went out for the impending lien, excuse me, not in, 363 pieces went out for the impending lien. So there was over $1,100 more just there in sending. Again, we recoup that money. It is added into what the taxpayer owes under penalties and interest. So, so I am going up $1,500 on the postage. I've tried to keep it down, tried to keep it down, but I can't, I can't control how many impending lien letters go out, or impending deed letters. The delinquency letters are regular mail, and those are considered courtesy letters, and the town pays for that. Let's see. And equipment is, there's a dollar in there just to keep the line item open. I don't need any equipment at this time. And I would say, you know, the, the budget has gone up due to the postage, and my employee benefits line went up this year. Does anybody have any questions?
Select people, any questions? Go ahead, Select Person Bailey.
Thank you very much. Underlight, this is at the percentage, on the percentage change line, mainly for Connor, on 4112, where it's got the hashtag div slash zero. Is that supposed to have a figure in it, or is that supposed to be that way?
No, it, there's just a formula. If the formula divides zero by zero, it gives you that kind of as an error message. So just because that line isn't used, that line's closed out, that's what that means.
And the other one is down to copy, at least in maintenance, it's got 9,900%?
Yeah, it was increased from a dollar to $100. So it's just, it's just showing the calculated percent of very high.
Okay, thank you. That's the only questions I had. Thank you, Madam Chair, Connor.
Okay, and do we have our Advisory Budget Committee on the phone or on the meeting?
Steve, you're muted. If you press star six, it should unmute yourself. I see, yeah, there you go.
Very good. Thank you, Steve.
Okay, they've told me now that I'm not muted. So here I am. This is Steve. The Budget Committee really reviewed the budget and, and the explanations that were provided, and we have no additional questions whatsoever. It was a good presentation. Thank you.
Very good. Okay.
I think Dan's hand was up.
Go ahead, Select Person Air.
I did not touch anything. I just watched it came on automatically. I don't know why.
Okay, every now and then, things happen with technology. Linda, thank you very much for a very detailed approach to what is clearly zero-based budgeting, and we appreciate it. Thank you. Moving on, moving on to our town clerk and the election budget. Kim, you out there?
I am.
Okay. You're on.
So I have two fun facts. One of the fun facts is, we have no wards in Barrington. With all of the voting, that is like a call I received 100 of today, there are no wards in Barrington. So spread the word, so nobody has to keep calling. That's all they're calling the office for. And did you know that where Don Page Restaurant is, that's where Muriel Leoka, she was a previous clerk before Sheila Marquette, she ran her office out of Don Page. That was her house. I just thought that was kind of interesting.
Love it.
That is interesting.
So, for my budget with the election, if you want me to start with the election, basically, it's lower because we have only one election. So there's not much, if anybody has any questions about the election budget.
Select people, any questions about the decrease in that budget due to less elections?
I have none, Madam Chair.
Very good. And ABC, did you want to weigh in on that section before we move on to the town clerk?
No, we're okay with that. Let's go on to the town clerk.
Very good. Go ahead, Kim.
Okay, so with the town clerk budget, I'm not going to go line by line like Linda did. I'll just highlight, the earned time buyout was decreased $1,500 down to $3,000. It's not used as much. I'm the only one that uses it, so I increased that line. And one of the, it's a service fee. It's line 4572. That was decreased down to a dollar. The fee, it was in there in case anyone decided to go paperless. It would be a fee the town would be charged. We haven't been charged yet, but in case we are, I just want to keep that dollar in there. And the equipment line went down by $2,000. That's line 4754. And that money in there is a carryover for to outfit the new town hall. So, anybody have any questions on the town clerk budget?
I have none.
Okay, and do we have our Advisory Budget Committee with their response?
I think on the, the question that the Advisory Board had, was on the equipment line, 4754, and Connor has passed that line on, that question on, and in his report, it now itemizes what that $4,000 is for, and our, our question has been satisfied. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. It appears that, I'm sorry, Connor, did you say something?
Oh, I just, I wanted, before you moved on, I wanted to let you know Andy had his hand up.
Oh, go ahead, Vice Chair Nap.
Yep. I just had a question on the, the same line. It was the 4754, and it was, being the equipment is geared to the purchase of equipment that will go into the new town hall. Are we, do we think we're likely to get the town hall up in 2021? And I'm, I would be okay leaving it in there, even if it means we don't end up expending it this year and then have to do it as opposed to buying equipment, and then having to sit on and store that equipment, just because things tend to get damaged, broken, abused while they're waiting for their final destination.
Yeah, that's why I'd like to wait till, hopefully, 2021. Is that what you're saying, Andy? Wait till 2021?
Yeah, if the building isn't up until 2021, or 2022 even, we wait until the appropriate year to, that it's built. When it's, when there is actually a building to move furniture into, we don't buy it and just sit on furniture.
That, that would be helpful. I just want to make sure that, that money is somehow allocated when I need it.
Yep, I would agree.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns in reference to this portion of the annual budget? Okay, thank you, ladies.
Thank you very much to both of yous.
I think the next up is the public comment section. Go ahead, Select Person Air.
I tried to put my hand up. I don't know what happened. But, um, two, with the transparency and stuff, I know I've called down there and tried to leave a message, and then with all of my employees and stuff, is there any ways to improve it next year, communication?
It's a great question, and I don't know if Kim's still there on mute, but we're actually working right now on a self-service booking, appointment booking program. So somebody, you know, opposed to calling in, making the appointment, to streamline the process. So if somebody gets home from work at 7 o'clock and can't call to make an appointment at the town clerk's office, they can log on, see what appointments are available, schedule their appointment there, be able to see what information they'll need to bring with them and things like that. So we certainly hope to have that on before next year, but hope to make some improvements that way, if that helps address your question.
Yes.
Okay. We're moving on to the public comment section of the meeting. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person for a total of 15 minutes. If you would like to speak as a member of Barrington resident or business, please just mouse over the screen. You'll see there's a small hand you can click on. It will alert us that you'd like to speak. If you're on the phone and would like to speak, you have a couple of options. You can dial 664-0146, and you'll get our town administrator on the phone, or you can alert us at administration@barrington.nh.gov, and we will certainly make sure that you get to have your three minutes of public comment. I am, as usual, going to time 30 seconds to allow people the opportunity to alert us.
I don't see anything coming in yet. I will take this opportunity to let the board members know, those items that are hole punched in your packet have a place in the binder where they belong. So this week, you have the Health Department, Rural District, and Shelter Description and History. You'll notice that a section was added to that describing the two shelters that we make contributions to, to be fully and completely transparent that the town has made these contributions in the past. Currently, one of the sitting Select Board members is the Executive Director of one of those facilities. So that added transparency is important, just so the community is able to see the history there in that line. We have the August Treasure Report that's in there, and then also an updated copy of the budget calendar. And you'll notice on that budget calendar, on the bottom, is the, the links to join the meeting, and the call-in number and ID. So I reconfigured the meeting so that every meeting has the same link and the same conference ID to join it. So that will stay the same throughout the entire process for anybody interested. Thank you.
Very good. Go ahead, Select Person Bailey.
It's just a request that on the Advisory Budget Committee, if we could know who wrote them, it would be nice. I've, I have my copy here, and there's no submitted by on it. If they could do that next time, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, that would be our town administrator.
And the finance administrator, yes. Staff is doing the minutes, George, myself and Amy.
Thank you. Could we so note that, please?
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Would you like that on the Select Board minutes also?
No.
Okay.
Okay. Any other public comments? Connor, anything else? Come in via email. Okay, thank you. I'm going to close the public comment section and move on to the review of the meeting minutes from September 28. I don't necessarily have a correction to the meeting minutes from the 28th, but I do think it's important to note, under the Senior Projects section, that we did ask for an update on how the equipment would be sterilized and then dispersed. I think, was that what we asked for an update on?
Yes.
Okay.
We, yeah, we didn't agree on the dispersment at that.
Right. So, and I don't see that listed anywhere, and I do think it's important to just say, distribution, ask for a final review, or something to that nature.
Great.
Do we agree? Go ahead, Select Person Air.
I tried to raise my hand. I don't see.
You're muted, sir. Go ahead.
Last, on the minutes and stuff, some of that was not recorded to check out difficulties. Am I correct? Can we put a note in the minute?
The entire video is not available. Correct.
Can we put a note saying, in the minute, reflecting that?
It's on the first page, Dan, underneath the first paragraph. Due to a global Microsoft outage, the beginning of this meeting was not recorded.
Right. That's good enough.
I think it's good enough. So other than that, any other corrections, or go ahead, Vice Chair Nap?
Yep, I had one. Under the technical, excuse me, the Technical Advisory Committee Recommendations and Priorities. Now, I remember us talking about it from a traffic standpoint, where this says, after scoring the suggested project for Barrington, a pedestrian path that is included in the town's master plan was ranked second in priority for the area. I didn't think we were talking about the bicycle path. For some reason, I had the intersection of 9 and 125 as ranked the second priority area.
Marsha, Marsha could expand on that, but I think they're one in the same. Marsha, are you there?
That was the sidewalks.
It's sidewalks and safety improvements would be the correct description.
Okay, because bicycle slash pedestrian path, to me, thinks like bike path running through town.
Right, no, that's, it's, it's sidewalk and safety improvement, which may also include some accommodation along the side of the road. That's yet to be determined, but it clearly is considered sidewalk and safety improvement. Be like intersection, those types of things along 9 and 125.
Right. Can we, can we have this just modified to more accurately reflect to that?
Definitely.
Pedestrian path comes back to, to, in my terms, things that have been brought before town vote, before looking for bicycle paths running through town, and I feel like it creates confusion as to what this actually.
I definitely understand that, that, that language. I will say that language was likely copy-pasted from the project description in those tac documents, but we can, we can definitely adjust it to say sidewalk and safety improvements.
Okay, so other than those two changes to the meeting minutes, are there any other changes, corrections, or notes that you need included, folks?
I would ask, we don't approve the minutes at this time. Here, we set it up for the next meeting.
Okay.
That's my request. That's all, Madam Chair.
Anybody, and we have a second on that. Roll call vote, beginning with Select Person Air on that.
Air, I.
Bailey, I.
Nap, I.
Go, Tom.
Hardikoff, I. We'll table that until the next meeting. Thank you all. That was the review of meeting minutes. We're gonna head on to the staff report. TA McGyver.
Yes, first, Andy, I'm gonna mute you again, just, I'm getting some feedback. I don't know if it's your volume, but FYI. So I'm glad to report that this time last year, I had no October work anniversaries to share with you. Historically, anybody that was working for us, nobody had been hired in October. So I'm glad to share the one-year work anniversary for our police officer, Samuel Saroski. So congratulations on a year in the town of Barrington, and probably one of the most interesting police academy experiences of, of the folks working here with the switch to virtual and everything like that. So terrific officer. The only other thing I have to add, I just want to bring this up with the The only other thing I have to add, I just want to bring this up with the board and certainly have any conversation and have Mark chime in. I did send an email, but it was only like an hour before the meeting started. So we we went through the process, advertised the mechanic position. We all kind of knew going in that that posit the success of that position would rely on finding the right person. Definitely received applications from a couple of qualified candidates. But more interestingly, received an application from somebody looking to be a member of the crew. And Mark did his due diligence and and met with everybody and and believes after talking to the folks interested in joining the team in the town of Barrington thinks that there's a real opportunity to add a member of the crew and kind of prioritize the succession management for the highway department crew a little bit more right now than the mechanic position. So certainly not looking at all to dismiss the idea of a mechanic altogether, but kind of put that on hold to take advantage of this opportunity that was presented to us. Mark, I don't know if there's anything you want to expand on that.
Well, you pretty much said everything that there is. Basically, the sadly, the mechanics, the viable candidates for the mechanics position. The two that I had in mind that I know personally, I know their their work. They basically opted not to come on board at the last minute. Two of the others that were viable, there were logistic issues. They just live too far away to really be A, you know, dependable to get in here on time for the winter events. And B, you know, so that they wouldn't risk their own safety trying to make it here for those winter events. So if I'm gonna do this, I want something that's as close to perfect as I can get. And it just wasn't there this time around. I still think it's it's something to definitely keep on the back burner, hold down the road for another event. If another event happens personnel wise, we can revisit it. But for now, a gentleman came forward, filled out an application long before the mechanic thing was ever even really gaining any traction. And he wants a change from his present work environment. And he's his reviews are absolutely stellar. I checked up on him.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, point, point of order.
Yes, sir.
I think we're going too far in depth on this individual and for other privacy reasons, just to say he's acceptable would be enough.
Okay, thank you for your point of order. So and I am going to ask the select board, I would like to move the discussion on this position to under new business because it's going to take a vote of moving the position back to the prior pay grade. And I don't think now is the time to discuss this. Is anyone else okay with moving that to new business?
I.
I, uh, select person there, I'd like to hold off. Is everyone okay with moving that to under new business?
Yes.
Yes.
George, you okay with that?
Not really, but I'll say yes.
Thank you, sir. Select person air.
Present.
And select person, Sakoshia.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Connor?
No. Tiffany?
And I I do, before I introduce Municipal Office Administrator Cottle, I wanted to bring something up, which is part of why I wanted to move this under new business. I heard from multiple people after the last meeting and from varying positions throughout the town, whether they were volunteer or employee, department head, what have you. I want to make note that as we are interacting with all department heads, it becomes extremely important. We've hired these experts to do their job, make their recommendations and do the job to the best of their capability. And I think each and every time we as select board members are interacting with those department heads, it becomes very important to give everyone the same dignity and respect that they deserve for the work that they're doing. That said, I also wanted to say I completely recognized that the select board found deficiencies in what became noticeable for safety for employees. So hats off to all of you for pointing out that one of our most important roles as volunteers that have been elected to these positions is to make sure that every employee is safe. And so I think, you know, it was an interesting group of communication that came together last time. But most importantly was the appropriate and fast response to the safety issues and to making sure that we get some offices for the professionals that we've hired to lead departments. And so part of why I wanted to move this discussion into new business was to be able to have the opportunity to share that perspective with you. Go ahead, select person air.
Can I go back? How many, how many people applied?
We're gonna discuss that under new business, select person air. So just write down your question and we'll move to that afterwards. Right now, Municipal Office Administrator Cottle is on.
Just one request for signature. It is going to need a wet signature. It's one deed with no covenants returning a property to the previous owner following all taxes paid.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you. Up under old business is the fire tanker cabin chassis.
I would respectfully like to request the board to table this for the next meeting on October 19.
Okay, anybody uncomfortable with that or do we have a consensus?
I'm all right with it. Sakoshia.
Air I.
I'm fine with it.
Okay, we have tabled it and boy, this can be the fastest meeting on record. 2021 road improvement projects.
Don't you jinx us.
I know, sorry. 2021 road improvement projects.
Okay, you have two documents printed in your report. I'll have Mark go through them. They're the first document is the paving projects proposed for next year. And the second document is the road construction projects. I'm sure you've had a chance to review them. Would you like the road agent to to go through and give a presentation? Or would you like to just go to questions?
Select board questions? Select person air, your hands up first. Go ahead.
Just going through these numbers that were presented, I come up a different total on it.
So is what you're asking is that you'd like to see the calculations more detailed?
No, just I just added up 27, 254, 208, 152. I come up with 642, 28, not the 615.
I think the 27,000 for the overlay on Locks Hill Lane is what's different.
Good catch, Dan. So I think you're right that the total on the backside under total project should read 642,284 dollars.
Any other questions, comments, concerns, anyone? Seeing as there's no questions, comments, or concerns, would anyone like to make motion to accept the 2021 paving projects overview? Is that a motion? Go ahead, select person air.
I feel the the road agent and staff, I was doing excellent job. And then throughout the budget, I would like to revisit that line item and warrant articles. I made a couple concessions and stuff to verify those amounts.
I'm sorry. So after you vote on this, you'd like to, after you vote on accepting the plan, you'd like to wait to accept that portion of the line item of the budget?
No, I want discussion on it throughout the budget because things have changed in the budget and stuff. And I feel the infrastructure of our town, the warrant articles adjust for that paving line stuff. There's a 600 and there was a 125 that reduced to 120. I'd like that that back guy is a warrant article.
Okay, hang on. I just want to be clear. You do realize there's contingency paving if for any reason there's leftover money, correct?
Yeah, but it's not what we have to do, what we need to back on order to get a paving plan is something manageable. I feel the money shouldn't should be there for the to do the project.
And so what you want included in this 2021 paving projects overview is to add an analysis of all future projects?
No, this just go over the budget because when I look at the budget, I had a couple of comments. We have 600 for paving, 80, 85 for road maintenance. And there used to be a warrant article on for the taxpayers to vote on for paving line item. That was replaced with the addition. So now throughout the budget, we have to readjust it. I would like that as a warrant article.
Vice Chair Nap?
Yeah, I was just trying to help. I I kind of knew what Dan was trying to say is that normally we have 600,000 allocated to paving. In this case, we would burn the entire 600,000, have 40 plus thousand left that we wouldn't be paying for from paving where the $125,000 town warrant that we normally put forward would be able to cover the additional 40,000 plus any cost changes that are that may come up throughout the process. And that $125,000 warrant article had been pulled in place of the expanded budget to cover the highway garage build out that we discussed last week that's now been pushed out.
Okay.
Couple of items, if I may.
Go ahead, TA McGyver.
So the I think the definitely talking about funding for these projects is important. The highway department budget presentations next week, the or next meeting. The purpose of bringing you these projects now is not to clutter up that that conversation with the specific projects. So you can focus on money at that meeting. And so definitely, if you want some more information ahead of that meeting, we can get it for you. So you can talk good numbers then. And in separate conversations with Dan, I understand that he'd like to see the amount we contribute to paving projects increase and gradually increase over time. And so I think that's the the point that he's trying to make. And so we can talk about that at the budget next week or or next meeting. As far as the non-lapsing account, that article is one that was actually pulled last year. So that that isn't, that was one that was traditionally included in the list of warrant articles. We did not include that one last year because with the $400,000 Green Hill Bridge warrant article, it was starting to be a pretty big ask of voters. And so this year, instead of adding that that one back in with the bigger projects, which we'll talk about in a second, the the funding source for one of those bigger projects, which is the Orchard Hill Project, the intended funding source for that project is the transportation fee capital reserve, which is where we opted to take the extra money for paving this year because we didn't have that article. So it that article wasn't pulled this year, it just wasn't added back in after being pulled last year. But it's certainly something I'd be happy to crunch the numbers and show you what it would look like to add it back in. And as select person air and select person nap mentioned, if as the placeholder, if that 125,000 that was in there as a placeholder, if we just relabel that as non-lapsing paving article, it doesn't change, the impact remains the same. And so having that's where having those placeholders becomes valuable. Hopefully that was helpful.
Okay.
Yes.
So in reference to the, and we requested this of the department head for the 10-5 meeting, and I I absolutely appreciate that it's done and complete. Is there a motion to approve the 2021 paving projects? That's a motion, Dan air?
Yes.
And do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Vice Chair Nap. Roll call vote beginning with select person air, please.
Air I.
Bailey, I.
Nap, I.
Sakoshia.
And Hardakoff, I. Thank you. The paving projects overview goes through. Thank you. Next up is the highway garage office improvements.
We gotta talk about the construction projects now.
Wait a minute. Why do I not have?
You have a paving project and construction projects.
To be honest with you. Oh, I guess because I saw Mal ago, I thought that's what it was. Okay. There is in front of you the Plan 2021 Road Construction Projects Overview. And let's see. I don't see a total amount on this one.
This is a little bit different than the than the paving. So the paving overview is to kind of show you where that paving line, where the paving budget comes from. These projects, the benefit of these projects, this isn't something that you've normally had in the past. But this is something Mark's been working on as he looks ahead to next year. And so we wanted to give you an idea, you know, the funding sources for different aspects of these projects is either in the operating budget or some other funding sources like we've talked about. And so this is less about the funding, more about the, this is where the highway department plans to focus its energy and attention next year on these bigger picture projects in addition to other things that come up. So this isn't as much about the funding as it is about the work products expected to make sure that the board has an opportunity to provide input and buy in for the work of the department, planned work of the department, which certainly has financial implications.
Okay, any questions, comments, concerns, ideas in reference to the road construction projects overview?
No.
Go ahead, select person air.
I will not put any vote on Lakeside Oaks. I vote present. I think it's a touchy matter.
Would you like to expand and give an opportunity for further explanation?
I think we're opening ourselves up. My understanding, it's a private road. We do any work, we open ourselves to a lot of things. There's 160 miles of private roads in this town. We have 80 miles down roads and then I don't need to, well, taxpayers' dollars to all things are exhausted. I sent out my reply to the selectman for information only as my stand on it. I get some feedback possible of the questions and stuff. I'm willing to let you discuss if you want, but I will not at this time try to have that information. You will comfortable putting my name on it.
Okay, go ahead, TA McGyver.
So just real quick, it's it's an important point about the use of of town funds on private property, this being a private road. And, you know, oftentimes there's a misconception that town money can never be spent on private property or a private road. And that's not the case. It's the expenditures of public funds needs to be for a public purpose. And very frequently, the town spends money typically with road projects, whether it be for drainage easements or other things on private property. And the because the purpose is the the public good, it's a public purpose. And so in the case of the Lakeside Oaks Drive, the culverts there are the immediate outfall of the Swains Lake Dam. And it actually wasn't too long ago that those culverts washed out during dam operations in in a high rain event situation, and the town replaced those culverts. So it's not like the the culverts that are in there now, the town put in. So it's not like the town hasn't done work on that road before out of necessity for the the dam maintenance that we're responsible for. So the those culverts are are deteriorating and limiting the ability to properly control the dam. So we're in the process of doing what we should have done as soon as we took responsibility for that dam, which is getting the proper easements to take what we need to, not just in emergency situations. And the the use of town funds, trust me, I don't want to have to spend $150,000 any more than you folks do replacing those culverts. But it's that we have a responsibility to maintain that dam and operate that dam in a safe and responsible way. And right now that is limited by the limiting factor of that is those culverts. So we need to be in a position to be able to replace those culverts. And it's it's a perfectly justified use of public funds. It's, you know, certainly the select board's responsibility to set priorities and say that this is a priority project or it isn't, which we can talk more about. But there's nothing that precludes the town from protecting the dam that we're responsible for by improving the infrastructure downstream.
Select person air.
Was it no, has DES been notified about the failure of the structures and stuff? Because I'm on the conservation and came for the conservation on it so far.
Cause I'm on the conservation and came for the conservation on it so far.
It's a great point. And no, they haven't because the structures haven't failed. Uh, what we're trying to do is put the town in a position to catch a problem before it's an emergency. Um, typically we'll be able to make repairs more responsibly um and environmentally and protect the environment better.
Um, TA McGyver, a question is simply, is there a difference between maintaining a road that's private and maintaining a culvert for um purposes of protecting other roadways?
Yes, there's a difference.
Okay, so we're within our right to not adopt the road because it's not a public road, it's a private road, but to provide the culverts?
Correct. If we do it right, which is securing an easement and, and using the appropriate channels. But yes, absolutely.
So the only time that this, this would occur is if we obtain proper easement?
Yes, we would, it would be imperative that we acquire an easement from the private property owner in order to do this work. And yes, we would be, at that point, we would be doing work on town property because we hold an easement.
Okay. Okay, so based on that information, oh, go ahead now, Vice Chair Napp.
All right, I was beginning to, I was getting ready to ask if I was chopped liver here.
Sorry.
So the um, I guess I'll start with Lakeside Oaks just because it's where we've been for the last 10 minutes. Um, my general comment on Lakeside Oaks is there, and, and I actually firmly believe that with probably a little bit of effort, there would be a much better exit strategy from there than the current kind of woods road that they have through there coming out the other way. And I, um, I believe it's Kaliff Island Road because the two driveways each other literally have like a 10-foot strip that separates them at the very tops of them, which would make it so that you don't even have to drive down the driveway to get out. Um, and I think it would be worth pursuing that before anything about pouring $175,000 into culverts at this point. Uh, because at that point, then you could rip them out and you care less about any of that.
Okay, so do we, do we have a right to do that though on a private road, TA McGyver?
Um, I would doubt it. And I would doubt if the um, from an emergency services standpoint, that that would be an approach to be supported. But if the board would like us to evaluate it, we can. So essentially you'd be suggesting take the entrance off, eliminate the entrance off Hall Road, have the entrance come in off Kaliff Island Road, which then turns into um Pearl Lane, which is another private road. So outside of the constraints of, of the multiple private roads, I think that creates a really long dead end with the dam at the end of it, which we need to still be able to get our equipment back into to maintain. So I, if the board wants to evaluate it, we can look into it. But I see some pretty significant hurdles on the outset.
You can, and it's, oh, can I finish?
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
You, you can, and it's, it's already a really long dead-ended road at this time. And the problem with it is it's set up now is you got three culverts you gotta cross. Where elim- eliminate the hazard, like that, that's like fundamental 101 from an engineering end is you take out the hazard.
But what I'm hearing is that even by taking that step, you wouldn't eliminate the hazard.
No, you would because you wouldn't have three culverts to maintain. You, you'd eliminate the culverts, you could take them out completely, and then you worry about that. And it's yet.
Do you have a response to that? Or would you like to ask someone who's an expert in bridge engineering about that?
Well, like, like I said, if the board, um, there definitely be a lot of questions to pursue in order to evaluate that option. And if the board would like uh us to spend time doing that, I'm happy to. And, and to come back and give more specific responses to the hurdles that are in place. And I certainly don't wanna say that um, you know, it's an option that we wouldn't consider at all. But I see, in, in my role, I see some pretty immediate hurdles. If the board wants us to look into it, I'm happy to. I also saw that Chief Walker um raised a hand to ma- make comment if you're interested in his input at this time as well.
Okay, I have select person air with the hand up and then we'll hear from Chief Walker. Go ahead, select person air. Hold on.
You're killing me.
Your hand's gone, Andy. I thought you were done speaking.
No, I said that was the first item. I'd come back to the others.
Okay, go ahead.
Andy.
Can I, can you guys do me a favor then? Select person air, either use the hand up on the screen so that your hand is not continually doing this. And Andy, if you could leave your hand on till you're done speaking, I'd have a much better picture of all of your body language. Go ahead, Vice Chair Napp.
All right. So I wanted to also talk about Orchard Hill because that came up. Um, it came, it went before the planning board for the development um of, as noted in here, Mr. James Conick, who bought the lots on either side. And part of the, there was a whole lot of conversation prior road agent about how we were gonna modify that, widen that road and make it easier. And it wasn't gonna cost us a lot of money and it was gonna be cheap, cheap. And here I'm looking at a $160,000 to $200,000 proposal. And originally we were talking less than 50K when it first came up. And I'd be happy to go back and dig up my prior data on that because I were discussing that a few years ago. So I, like, I don't know how it's gotten so wildly different, but that's a pretty substantial difference on that.
I'd be interested to see, certainly you know, Andy, I wasn't here. Um, and neither was Mark. Um, so I'd certainly be interested if you do have some old materials. What I pulled up from the meeting where the, the select board voted to proceed with the project, accepting the um easement adjustment for Mr. Conick and everything, kinda like the conclusion meeting. There was a report from DuBois and King um to, to make those road improvements, not including the knoll at the top, which we'd like to do. Uh, but not including the knoll at the top, the propos- the um cost estimate from DuBois and King was over 160,000. So if, if certainly if there's documents or anything that exists showing that the estimated cost was 30 or 50,000, that, that isn't what I saw doing the research. Like I said, I wasn't here. So if you have those things, I'd be glad to see it. But from what I saw, it's, it, at least at the point that the board made the decision, it was clear that this is gonna be 160, in the magnitude of $160,000 project.
Right. And the conversa- as I said, the conversation that was had at the meeting and, and I'm, was that um with the prior road agent was that they believed that they could do it themselves or in the, in the ballpark of $1,000. So I understand what DuBois and King put in. I'm just, this is what uh, I remember talking about when we went through the projects. I mean, this is one that I'd like to dig deeper into to see if we can um come up with a better alternative because it's a $200,000, it's gonna, we're, we're adding a lot of money in for projects really quickly here and figuring out how to either phase them or make them uh reasonable in nature is what I'm asking for out of it. I fully support tree removal, the Malago, Oak Hill drainage because I know those have all been ongoing issues as well. But Oak Hill is um a low-impact road and so is our wakes, is Lakeside Oaks, in my opinion.
Orchard Hill, you mean?
Yeah, sorry. Orchard Hill and Lakeside Oaks are low, low-impact roads from traffic impact to the town or volume.
Okay.
All right, done. Thank you.
I'm gonna ask you, turn your hand off, select person air, go ahead. And then I'd like to hear from Chief Walker.
Um, I didn't realize Lakeside Oaks could be a loop road. That's a positive thing. And then has the association notified that, that their culvert needs to be upgraded? And are they willing to pay for it?
So that, that road isn't, that road, that section of road is owned by an individual resident, not by the association. That, that um, that road is, um, each section is owned by, uh, if you look at the, the property lines, um, the, the other folks that use it have right-of-way access, just like the town does. Um, and so to your specific question, no, the property owners have not been noticed that they need to upgrade those culverts.
That brings another question. Are them, all them locks, all the easements are right-of-way passage with that law? Are they landlocked? Was it supposed to come in the other way and they just want that shorter route?
It's a great question. We've actually researched that. And no, they're, the easements are described off Hall Road.
Thank you. Okay, Dan, could you turn off your hand, please? Could we hear from Chief Walker, please?
Just a brief bit of uh past history. Uh, Ron Landry uh back uh in the late seventies or early eighties attempted to get a road cut through to Kaliff Island because we had a flooding issue. And the uh property owners wanted no part of it. And then um in the uh early 2000s, when the Kaliff uh Island subdivision was upgraded, that was one of the things the planning board worked on was to try to get an emergency um lane through there. And the uh people on the uh, uh, people that lived on Lakeside Oaks didn't want any part of it. And the uh property um developer didn't because they were concerned about people cruising through there. So not sure if anything's changed, but that's just a little bit of previous history from uh that side of town.
Okay. Very good. Um, I will say this, Andy, because I do also remember the Orchard Hill. And I remember at the time when the plan to begin some improvements on that road came up, I actually drove out there because I was not familiar with Orchard Hill. But I do think that the 50,000 that was discussed was not to do major improvements to it. I think it had something to do with a barn that was on the property or near the property and moving that portion of it or a house or something. That's what I recall about Orchard Hill after I drove out there and looked at it. I see a hand up with um Vice Chair Napp. Go ahead.
Yep, I was uh just, you're, you're right. There was a, a barn and a house that were being relocated out there um as well. Um, so I, that was, there was definitely a lot of talk about that. But what they were talking about doing was widening the corner. The improvement that they, we had talked about, when we talked about $50,000 was um widening the corner, adding some fill into it to make it so that you could comfortably get two vehicles down around through there and so that you could see with a fire truck, a plow truck or any other vehicle coming in and around that bend up through there and then dealing with the drainage issues coming off the hill. That was what the $50,000 was supposed to cover on all. The um, the other piece, just to, to note, looking at the Barrington GIS, um, you can see where the, where the road comes down in um on it, where Pearl, you have Peabody Way being private and then Pearl Lane being private. And um, I mean, it shows Pearl Lane connecting all the way across, but it literally misses in reality by one driveway and the two driveways run side by side. So they're less than, less than uh a goal line away from uh so I think it's definitely worth into it more if possible.
And so I just wanna be clear before I, I, I spend time or have staff spend time. I mean, what your talk, what, what I heard you suggest, Andy, was evaluate the viability of connecting that road through in order to permanently eliminate the access off Hall Road. Not as a secondary emergency access, but in order to permanently discontinue that section of, which would have implications for maintaining the dam and other things.
I don't know what implications it would have for maintaining the dam because we'd still have access. But it would definitely um eliminate the need to replace three culverts through a um already um undersized road that is not well-managed. And if they, and if it, or managed, I guess, as best as a small private road association can do it for the severe needs that that road has to maintain it um down through that stretch. And anyone that hasn't been there, I highly recommend going down and driving that stretch of road. Be, it is a tight road. It doesn't have a lot of room to maneuver. And with three culverts up through it, it definitely makes it um challenging for a small road association to be able to maintain.
So is that something that can be explored, TA McGyver?
Uh, so like I said, I'm happy to explore it. I just wanna make sure that that's the intent of the entire select board to explore the option of permanently discontinuing a section of a private road.
So can I get a roll call vote on that? Starting with, okay.
Bailey I.
Yeah, uh, I'm sorry. Yes, make a motion, please. Um, Vice Chair Napp, your motion?
Yep, I'll make a motion to investigate um the option of connecting the road um in, up, off of um Peabody, Peabody Way, um, which would improve access to the road and reduce maintenance and liability by discontinuing the lower section of um Lakeside Oaks.
Okay, so is there, and I see a second by select person air, beginning with select person air, roll call vote, please.
Air I.
Bailey I.
Napp I.
Secosh I.
Hardakoff I. Guess we're gonna explore this.
Great, thank you.
Is there a motion that you wanted, it's specific to um Item B for the Oak Hill Road Drainage? Or is the select board asking that that project be removed from this list?
Oak Hill.
I'm s- I'm sorry, Orchard Hill. Sorry, don't ever put two roads both beginning with an O and the second one next to each other. I'm looking at 35 pieces of paper. Um, select person air, go ahead.
Um, only issue I have with it is my appoint to it is appoint for that work in the line items. I feel that's part of drainage and stuff. It's a dirt road, has nothing to do with paving. So that shouldn't have anything with the paving, paving line.
Okay, uh, Vice Chair Napp, you have your hand up?
Yep, I was just gonna say, I actually agree with that, that it should be part of our dirt road management plan and um it's gonna be one of those where I think we're gonna have to budget and plan longer term. And with all the conversation around culvert replacements on Young Road with Swains Lake, the um drainage outflow or drainage flow on Swains Lake that needs to be repaired on Young Road before it um transitions to um, you know, whatever the heck the name of the road is, I'm drawing a blank. Is it switches, Merritt, uh, I've lost it, never mind. But uh, it's not Merritt, it's before Mary, whatever it turns into right there where Mary Hill comes into it. I'm just.
France Road?
France.
France Road, thank you. Um, so looking at that, we have, there's a lot of items and projects coming up. I really think we need to get a whole list of those out and prioritize because there's some major money in all of these projects. And, and I would put off Oak Orchard Hill Road, almost did it again, for things that have much larger impacts on the town.
Okay, so we're gonna explore Project D and you would like to remove Project C for now.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, I got you, select person Bailey. I'm just finishing up with Vice Chair Napp.
Yep, I, I don't necessarily think we need to remove it. I just wanna make sure it's prioritized accordingly.
Okay, go ahead, select person Bailey.
Well, listening to everybody here and with my feelings, I think that uh we should postpone the vote on this. Have this list along with everything else prioritized. And then when it comes time for uh Mark's budget, we'll sit down there and we'll have a better idea. Because right now it looks like someone's putting the, the horse before the uh, or the cart before the horse, I should say, and trying to get us to commit to spend money now. And then we get to the budget, we're gonna say, oh my gosh, we made a mistake. So I'd rather have us have everything together when we do this. And I think it'd work out better for all of us to get a better understanding of what expenses are there.
I, I will point out that it was the select board that asked that this information be brought forward specifically on the 5th of October. But I have now tabled or, or will entertain a motion to table this portion of the road improvement projects if someone would like to make that motion.
I mean, Madam Chair, I mean, the, the way this is going, it's just like, it's like an acorn in the ground. You water it, it just gets bigger and bigger. And that's what's happening.
Okay, select person air, you have your hand up?
To clarify my thing with the line and where that belongs. Everyone else, in the more depth and stuff, I always, I always realize so that we can count the money up. So it doesn't, we don't get overboard.
Okay, so. Okay, so would anyone like to make a motion to table this portion, which is the road construction projects portion and table it until the presentation from the highway department?
I'll make that motion, Madam Chair.
And do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call vote beginning with select person air, please.
Air I.
Bailey I.
Napp I.
Sakosh I.
Artikoff I. Okay, we're moving that to when the highway department does their full presentation.
That's. Comment, Tracy?
Yep, go ahead, Vice Chair Napp.
Yep, so my general comment is I just wanted to thank Mark for all the work he's done on this because I do appreciate the fact that the board is becoming much more informed about the projects, the road projects and the costs associated with this early in the budget process so that we are really thinking about it in a way that helps us make good decisions for the town. So thank you for that.
Excellent. Go ahead, select person Bailey.
Thank you. Going along with Andy has said, I mean, select person Napp, excuse me, and what Mark is doing, you know that all of us together before in the past, we've had some issues that we've discussed. And what's happened is now that Mark has become more familiar of our town and some of these items are cropping up that should have been brought to our attention years ago. And it seems like Mark is the villain, but he's not the villain as far as I'm concerned. He's just bringing us to our attention, things that need to be done that weren't done. And that's, I can understand that. I mean, it's one way or the other, it looks bad, but it's not. It's something that we need to have and we're getting that information. Just to put just a comment.
I, I know, I think you're saying that we're lucky. We have someone with this expertise. That's what I'm hearing you say, so.
That's why your meetings don't go very long, see, because you can shorten it up and I can't.
And I saw a thumbs up by select person air on that. So very good. Okay.
If I may, one thing, if any select board member has specific questions they'd like more information on before the budget presentation, please send them to me. I, I know we don't need to continue the discussion now, but I feel like there's pieces of information that select board members are expecting. And if you could articulate what piece of information you'd like, that will be helpful for us to try to get you that information.
Excellent. Okay, we can all take responsibility for that, certainly. Select person air?
Connor, do you need, do you need immediate address? I thought I've done an okay job about moneying line items.
No, I understand that completely. I think if you'd like to request something specifically at the budget presentation in two weeks, you and I talked about taking and increasing the paving budget line by 25,000 and increasing the, or instituting a non-lapsing warrant article at 125,000. So if you wanted to make a specific request like that, I think the budget meeting would be a good time to do it.
Very good. Okay, we're moving on to the Highway Garage Office Improvements. And we have a piece of material Connor pulled together from Will Scott.
Yes, so thank you. And in my report, I know you've all read through, I, I over, provided an overview of addressing some of the concerns that were brought up at the last meeting and, and have put the town in a, in a place where hopefully we can consider and focus on moving forward and, and what a viable option is for this department. As we talked about in the meeting last week, the suggestion was brought up from the board to consider a job site style trailer as a permanent or semi-permanent installation down there. So provided some information in my report about that. The specific quote that I included attached to my report, that's a, a kind of a Cadillac version that this company is installing right now for the Mass Department of Transportation. So certainly it has different bells and whistles than would be required for the town of Barrington. Not saying that our highway department isn't as good as the Mass Department of Transportation, but I am saying we may not need doors with full glass panels on interior offices and things like that. So anyways, you have that quote. I guess what I, what I'd be looking for from the board, and I think Mark would be as well, is a sense of direction. This was brought up at the Budget Committee meeting. The chair of the Budget Committee brought it up at the last meeting and they talked about it as a group. They were very supportive of taking the opportunity to use unexpended appropriations this year to, to meet the needs of the department, get this taken care of and move on to higher priorities next year. And so this is certainly something that we could do before the end of December, which we'd have to in order to use, you know, 2020 appropriations. What you, what is proposed or what you have information for is a single wide trailer that would, that price includes everything, including installation. But there would be some additional site work, you know, getting a pad, getting water, electricity, you know, depending on what we did for a location sewer. So guess what I'm looking for and what I think Mark's looking for as well is, is what more information do you need to make? How would you like to proceed based on the information that's currently available to you?
So I'm going to say one thing before I move on to a select person who'd like to speak. And that is based upon this, and I realize the timeline we have is less than, what, 90 days at this point or right about 90 days? Our RFP process would require that we obtain three quotes, correct?
So the, the purchasing policy, depending on how we approached it, yes, the, a bid process for something of this price, anything over $10,000 would require a bid process.
That's, yeah, okay. Select person air had his hand up first. Go ahead, Dan.
I didn't get the layout of it and stuff. I don't really care. And then I've talked into the TA McGaiver. Only thing I would, would like to do through talk with it, think, to think out of the box ahead when we put it, it's there. We don't have to add, we don't bring any future problems. And we have movement it or something. And then for safety issues too, about connectors and stuff like that, make sure we have everything in place before we make the decision where to locate it.
Okay, are you done speaking?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Vice Chair Napp.
Yep, so I spoke a little bit with Connor about this earlier today. So similar to Dan, I want to make sure that we're mindful about placement of it. That, you know, anything where we have to do a well, septic, electric, heat are, are all additional added costs. The other piece, what I would almost consider doing is like, like a three foot retaining wall along the front. So when you pull up, you basically you're at grade walking into it. So you don't need stairs, which eliminates the risk of having somebody fall as they're going in up and down stairs or into the building that makes it accessible. And I would like to see an actual layout and design of the facility and what they're talking about and where we plan on putting it on site. So we have a better idea of what that's going to look like and layout as from a cost standpoint.
Okay, you, you all done?
Done.
Okay, so the, the one thing I'll remind you all of is 90 days to spend the money. So there's a very tight schedule to get an RFP out regarding this. Go ahead, select person Bailey.
The only other thing is on the elevation notes, they require 24 inches on the setup for the height of it. So they require crawl space. So we have, we have to take selectman's nap, consider a request very carefully.
And so Chairperson Hardikoff, I would, with something like this, I would recommend that we would make a selection for a contractor based on qualifications because we won't know exactly what we want until we're working with them on what specifications are available, what build out specifically. This gives us a ballpark of about how much something would cost. So if we did a qualifications process, I'll be honest with you because I, I did the research before. The Recreation Department's done the research. There really aren't a lot of companies local that provide services like these. There's more rental services than there are, you know, new services. This company does both. They're at New Hampshire. Other communities have used them. Schools have used them. So, you know, the, certainly I wouldn't necessarily say that we shouldn't go through a selection process. If the select board could certainly waive the purchasing policy if they wanted to. But we could go through a qualification process where they're not submitting specific proposals. They're just saying, hey, you know, this is our company, this is what we do. And the select board could make a decision based on their qualifications and not a specific proposal. So just an option that gets less into the weeds in selecting a company and save that for when we're actually making those decisions.
Very good. Select person Sakosh, you had your hand up first?
I did. So, you know, as you guys know, I'm new this year, but I mean, if we went back to the meeting we had last week, you know, there's obviously hazards. I don't know if we can bypass the request for bid. As Connor had mentioned, you know, there's very little companies that do do this. It's kind of like a specialized thing. And, you know, and I think we kind of need to act on it sooner than later since there was a hazard presented to the board. And, you know, it's our due diligence for our town employees that they're safe. And I'd rather see this get, get moving instead of get, okay, well, we need to see a layout. We know Mark is very competent and, you know, we're meeting every week right now. So, you know, if he can talk to them and go, okay, we got a layout, this is it, this is how it's going to work for us. Because, you know, Tracy, you do your job. Andy, you're over at TurboCam. Dan, you're a farmer. George, I don't know what you do. I think you retired, but, you know, we don't know Mark's space. We don't know what he needs. And I'm sure he's going to need, you know, what, what he needs. And, and I trust in Mark with that, but I'd rather see this get, get moving forward instead of going, hey, okay, we need to get a quote from so and so and a quote from so and so. I'm familiar with the company for being in the trades. You know, like Connor said, there's not a lot out there and that's my two cents.
Okay, very good. Vice Chair Napp.
Yep, my general comment on it was going to be, let's just make sure, like, I know Connor quoted a 60 footer with looking at housing, two people having a kitchen area and a break room. I don't, you know, I don't know if we need a 60 footer. So I was just going to make a comment to say, let's please make sure we're mindful in sizing it appropriately for what we plan on doing. That was it.
Select person air, your hand is up?
Yes, well, that's why, well, layout, I don't really care about. I think too, that scene has a couple of bells and whistles that can be fine too, but that's not, that ain't a crazy phrase right now. And then we need to act fast. But only thing I'm saying, when we lay it out, we lay it out right. And Andy's more educated than me. I'm just a farmer. But sewer hookups and all that and stuff, and there is some life safety when you attach it. Like Andy brought up the ramp and stuff, or even exits, emergency exits and stuff like that for both buildings. That's why I feel comfortable with Connor. I've talked to him a couple of things and some general ideas, but when we do it, let's do it right.
So what I'm hearing is we will not have the ability, even if we took the time to write an RFP, to obtain quotes from companies that will service New Hampshire or the seacoast area. Does the select board wish to make a motion to waive the RFP process?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, so I have a motion from select person Sakosh and it sounds like I have a second from select person Bailey.
That's correct.
Okay, roll call vote, please, beginning with select person air.
Air I.
Bailey I.
Napp I.
Sakosh I.
Artikoff I, we're waiving the RFP. Connor, can you just make sure as you move forward with this process, please, that you're addressing all of the issues that were brought up tonight?
Yes, and I believe, I don't know if he still has a comment to add, but Mark is on his phone, so he can't raise his hand. I think he, I heard him chime in that he wanted to add something if you have time.
Yes, absolutely. Go ahead, road agent Mark.
Yes, just want to bring forward the fact that if we have to do any great amount of site work involved with this, it's getting on towards snow time now. I'm already really shorthanded. Actually shorthanded by two right now for a little bit of time here. We have a fair amount of stuff that we got to tie up loose ends around town as far as patching some rough spots in the road. We have to go cut all the brush off the dam. There's just, there's just a whole slew of stuff that's going to take every bit of my crew to finish up. Plus if snow hits early, you know, we've got, we've got that to deal with too. So if I had, if I have to handle the site work on the placement of this unit, it could be kind of rough. We could be, we could be behind the eight ball.
So that's something certainly Mark and I can discuss operationally, what the logistics would look like of the additional work that would be necessary. I will definitely, what I'm hearing most is that it's important that the board have some input and say on location, which I completely support. So Mark and I will get our heads together before the October 19th meeting with some specific options on where it could be, try to get it on a map and discuss the pros and cons so the select board can have some input there. And we'll also start tomorrow working on specifics with Will Scott about layout. I'll get some information like Vice Chair Napp asked about different lengths. Although I do know from conversations with her with these single wide trailers, the cost doesn't go down significantly with shorter units. And figure out what we can get for a build out and, and try to get the, the wheels moving. So thank you. I appreciate the board's support and interest to move the process along. And I think that we do have enough time, you know, I know the timeline's tight, but we do have enough time to do this thoughtfully if we start now. So I appreciate that.
Okay, and I'm going to speak and then I'm going to pull two select people in who have their hands up. I just want to thank the Advisory Budget Committee as well. They listened to the conversation on this, supported using the unexpended 2020 appropriations for this project. Go ahead, select person air.
Yes, to make it transparent, if we get into a bind, the Air Inc. will bid labor. We put out the bid for labor only to get it done, excited. I have some resources. I don't know, the other select person could do labor on electrical work only. We put it out the bid. So we could, it'd be all transparent. We just bid labor.
Okay. Yep, let's, let's let our road agent and our town administrator bring forward responses to all of the questions and concerns and certainly come up with a full proposal for this when they're ready to roll. Under new business, we have a hazardous, I'm sorry, a hazard mitigation emergency management plan grant. I'm reading through the material for a second time. And I realize this has to do with Stratford Regional Planning Commission as the contractor for this, but who would be writing the grant?
Chief Walker.
Oh, very good. So who would like to speak on it?
I can. This is a grant opportunity that the state makes available for a required document. This document allows us to pursue other grants necessary to have in place. And the in-kind match for the town would be staff time. So there is a match, but it wouldn't be a cash match. And I think Chief Walker's unmuted now or he's there. So if he wants to add anything, feel free.
Chief?
We, the only thing I'd add is that we have to do the hazard mitigation update anyway. The last two times, this is how we operated. We applied for the grant. We picked our own vendor. And again, it's a, it's a soft match with employees, wages covering our side of it. So it's just, it's really just a case of you folks agreeing to allow us to apply for the grant rather than paying for the whole thing ourselves.
Okay, questions, comments, concerns or a motion? Up, select person, Vice Chair Napp.
Chief Walker, who's winning the game?
It's six to three.
Okay. I, I have a motion from select person Sakosh. Thank you, Jim. Do I have a second on that motion to allow the? Okay, very good. Roll call vote beginning with select person air.
Air I.
Bailey I.
Napp I, and I should have made the motion when I was asking my question.
Sakosh I.
Artikoff I. Okay, moving on to the salt bid award. Each year there is a review of this. The road agent is recommending we sign a contract with the Granite State Minerals for 46.75 per ton for 4,000 tons of salt. I don't know if there needs to be a discussion on this since he's the expert and knows what he needs. Is there a motion for this or do you need discussion, folks?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Go ahead, select person. Uh, go ahead, select person air. What's your question?
Since I'm on the conservation, um, what it seems to me with the new procedures and the, with new technology coming on board to modernize salt use, can that line item be decreased? Because more is not better with salt and plus the droughts and stuff. Once the damage is done to the ground, you're not coming back. And it seems to me that with the state, even the town conquered, we use a lot of tonnage. There's any way that we could reduce that with environmental impact?
Dan, the pro- the budget proposal, which you'll see in detail next, uh, next meeting, um, the proposed budget reduces that operating budget line by thirty-two thousand dollars, which is fifteen percent. Uh, based on the experience we've had with Mark's management of winter maintenance operating supplies.
I'm just talking for the conservation. I love.
Okay, so do we have a motion to accept signing the contract? And I have a second from, uh, select person Sakosha. So roll call vote please to, um, sign the contract with Granite State Minerals for four thousand dollars.
Air, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Um, just to clarify, it's, it's more than four thousand dollars, but now.
Sorry, four thousand tons. My apologies. Was that a yes, Andy?
It was a yes and I said aye before.
Oh, okay. Go ahead. I, I might've talked over you. Go ahead, select person Sakosha.
Sakosha, aye.
And Hardikoff, aye. Let's purchase four thousand tons of salt. Okay. Now, two things, we're moving a discussion about a position that the select board chose to upgrade one level and there's a request to, I assume, and I'll let the road agent speak to this, drop it back down to the original level and make a higher. Is that correct, road agent? Is Mark on here and he's just unmuting?
I think that's.
Mark's on here.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't get the question.
Oh, so I, I assume what you're asking is we had moved the position to a higher level and another approved position description. You would like to revert it back to the original, original position description and the original rating down one level, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and you have a candidate for higher?
Yes, I do.
Okay, would anyone like to make that motion?
Conversation?
Up, go ahead, select person air.
Um, not give you details, but how many people applied for the job?
There's two qualified candidates for the mechanic position.
No, two qualified, but there's two and two I got to go down. So did four people apply for this advertised position?
Yes.
Did four people get interviews? My question is.
Three, three.
Three people got interviewed. Uh, one was so far away that, uh, it wasn't even, it wasn't even worth.
Okay, we can go into non-public if you need more details, but at this point, there's a recommendation for the hire, a recommendation.
Point of order, I am, point of order, I want information. Just, I don't want to go in details, but who? I don't, we advertise a job description. I just want to know the number of people who applied.
You told you, four.
Thank you.
Okay, Sakosha.
Chair, what, what's the name of this position we're trying to fill?
Timeout. One second. Go ahead, select person Sakosha.
Can I make a motion?
Okay, you couldn't unless, um, select man Bailey, did you have a comment in reference to moving this down a level?
I do, Madam Chair. What is the position we're filling? What is the position's name?
Truck driver, laborer, equipment operator.
Thank you very much, TA McGyver.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion?
Make a motion.
Is there a second for that motion to move the position down one level, revert it back to its original and offer the position to the person chosen?
I'll second the motion.
And a roll call vote please, beginning with select person air.
Air, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Nap, aye.
Sakosha, aye.
Hardikoff, aye. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Select persons reports. Select person air.
Um, so I've attended the school board meeting. I get, I have to get pre-approved to talk to them people, uh, for this school. Um, I don't know if I'm qualified, but basically, um, town lands has there's an email that went out this, with that correction, law line adjustment. There's nothing, no meeting and stuff. Conservation, uh, Matt and stuff, and then, um, been working on, um, there, there, there might be an announcement coming in the future on conservation. Um, I want to divulge it. I told the town administrator and the, um, chairwoman, well, individuals' participation. I don't feel it's my right to mention it now or. But basically, we all loved frogs and turtles and stuff, so thank you.
Okay, um, could I hear from select person Bailey on a report out, please, for any committees?
Nothing to report, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, select person Bailey, for that very concise and succinct response. Vice Chair now.
Planning boards tomorrow, no, nothing to report.
Okay, and, uh, select person Sakosha, rec?
So the rec, um, they're potentially thinking about maybe holding off on the addition until next spring. Um, we won't know the finer details until later. Um.
Understood, okay. Um, the transfer station is looking at the cost of bags, last I read. But I unfortunately did not attend the full meeting. I just, um, participated in the, uh, reading the meeting minutes for that because I was in a professional meeting at the same time. Um, I, and I did attend the beginning portion of the advisory budget committee. Um, the advisory budget committee is still looking for an additional member. Um, I've reached out to someone who has not responded about the position. Uh, there is one small correction for the time that I had to exit that meeting. Uh, but I have to say that it was a very nice consensus from the group on how they would view the budget process going forward. Uh, I know originally they had asked about, uh, the exercise of a five percent reduction from all department heads. They had further discussion on it and decided that was not the best use, I think, of all of the department heads' time, given that most of them presented zero-based budgets. So I very much expect, uh, respect the advisory budget committee's approach to this year's very tight, um, budget. And I, I appreciate their questions over specific line items, but I, I definitely appreciate, appreciated their approach to, to this portion of the budget as well this year, so. Um, it is time for public comment. Anyone in the public would like to speak as a town resident or business operator or owner in the town of Barrington? You can mouse over your hand and it will, um, click, click the hand button and we'll know you'd like to speak. Your other options are to email the town administrator at administration@barrington.nh.gov or to call six six four zero one four six if you are so inclined to do so. First resident is Mr. Dan Air. Go ahead, Dan, all time. You have three minutes.
Uh, Daniel Air, um, three thirty-four, Old Concord Turnpike. I donated two dol- two hundred dollars to the rec for a trunk of treat and I'm not going to participate in it. Give all my insurance, everything. And then I really want, as a person, for people to support this, even out of their pockets, to make it good for the kids. But we gotta remember, let's make it safe and everything. So let's bring everyone together, let's have a good Thanksgiving, let's do it safely. Uh, social distancing, clean up and stuff like that. And during these times, the kids are suffering. So let's make it a good one.
Okay, uh, any other public comments? TA McGyver, anybody come across in an email or a phone call?
No.
Okay, does the select board have any need for a non-public session?
I have one brief for reputation.
Okay, um, could I get a motion to enter non-public for purpose of reputation?
I reluctantly make a motion to enter non-public for.
Okay, I have a motion from Vice Chair and a second from, um, select person Sakosha. I will meet you all over in non-public with a promise that this will be brief. And before we move to that, do we have an update on the score, Chief Walker?
You're muted.
He's muted.
No change.
No change. Thank you, sir. I'll see you all over in non-public.
It was a reluctant motion. Reluctant.
I heard reluctant.